All rise, motion. Please, please. Regulations to the flag, United States of two republics, one nation, liberty, justice, for all. Thank you. All right, you guys able to? I'll make a motion to set the minutes. All favor.
Yes, every week so.
ADA update. Of course, our debt, we will be deviating from the printed agenda. We'll see. ADA update, the community center is good to go. Lip striping. This was. Why can't you do it? Done, I'll make a motion to expend thirty eight fifty on capital improvement account to strip and mark the handicap spaces at the system I built here. Rounds. So, all favor. Make the call, please, sir.
Move it.
Thank you. Thirty eight. Handicap parking. Far side, one here, five or two. Here as well. Straight. Round. Parking lots. Bar end over here. So. First fiscal meeting of the year. Like welcome back for your thanks very much. There are a few things that we have to do. This meeting. As a select board. First one is to elect the chair. The second. All favor. Second will be select. Yeah, that was pretty slick. Twenty thousand five. Six. Tell me this is on the side. Six, 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 seven. Yeah, so. So. I according to suggestions. My prediction. I was on the board, Bill, Eric, and first here. Nick North Ross. Half went there. Other half working way too. My Nick. John Michael three ways with. Last year was. Was trying. Granted, it was up to the attack. Couple months. Still might have been. Three hundred. What we just lost. At least six, so seven hundred. Yeah, six, 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 six. That's a little creepy. So. So is that? Motion. Yep. All favor. Perfect, thank you. Third thing is the capital improvement money sixty thousand. It was approved at town meeting. Let's have a discussion on that. We have. Of the.
We would then. So. It's a black. The building. Uh, five. Seventy two. Public access.
Just. Go to the.
Yeah.
Crunchy. Try to make sure we have. We should have cats. How they probably. Sustained.
That's attractive. Yes, the problem.
Cause I asked on. Uh, the people. That come out like.
Being. A amount of. The door.
So. I was not definitely was not expecting. I'm actually.
Remember estimate.
No, I understand, but usually we're. Right off. So. Okay. If you think of. Capital. As far as. What comes up with the bridge on this. That's we got two hundred on that for. Starting today. But I wouldn't. Find. Three plus two. Excellent. So. We now the twenty foster coming back. Is that to me, that should be a priority. Right? The devil sketches part where we weren't real. Dirt. We're not. Okay, anything down. Scary. All public works has to be. So he felt the money is spent on. No, I mean. Are we looking at? Finish making buildings. How buildings for like. Direct. The. Air. Park. Watch building. Yeah, they can, they can. Say show. So. You feel better. Wait on. Oh. That worked. Some of the. Try to hot rod, all right? That's. Trying to talk to these. Their ship will do. Yeah, talking service. But. You want yourself. So. You didn't ask, we got it. Yeah, but that was. That's what. Well, I guess. Let's banana. Especially. Yeah. Let's just not. All right, so how do you want? If I go, make a motion that we. Provide the capital improvement sixty K from town meeting to. Be redistributed amongst the three. That date here. Almost not to yell at us. Budget committee, what you got?
To know the fact that the problem is set. Date.
Well, I wouldn't say the select board sets it. The chairman of the budget committee would come to us and say, hey, this is when I want to start because until the first meeting is set, chairman is still a chairman.
Well, so that being said, so I'd like to stop the meeting. Um, for Monday, August twenty fifth.
Okay. Take a.
Contact.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, today we had a workshop for the ACO job description. I'll make a motion to accept it as written. Yeah. And we have the. Census certificate, certificate of assessment. Now proposing. From thirteen thirty five to twelve fifteen. About fifteen cents. As a mill rate. That will give us thirty. Thirty eight hundred six seventy four overlay. Uh, last year we spent.
Twelve.
Yeah. On things. So. Yeah, so we're going to see over about a drop. Dollar twenty. Last year. I'll make a motion that we. Accept through twelve fifteen. End session. Mm hmm. Perfect. Record rate is set. Yes.
Um, can you tell us what the total budget is for the town?
Four point three five for. Two million eighteen three thirty five. Two point zero one eight.
What's the total set down?
Four point one second.
Let me just read off the little papers. So county tax was four hundred and four thousand nine hundred and forty seven. The municipal appropriation was two million eighteen thousand three hundred thirty five. The school side was two million two hundred and sixty two thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and sixty nine cents. With the overlay being thirty eight thousand six seventy four eighteen is what we have. And then. Total valuation is on a. Two. Which is four million three hundred. Let's try this one. Three hundred and fifty eight million, three hundred and fifty seven thousand six hundred and twelve dollars is the total town valuations. So that's everybody's personal property, all of the real estate, all of the land values.
Four, three, five, seven, six, one, two.
Nope. Three, three hundred and fifty eight million.
Sorry, say it again.
Three hundred and fifty eight million. Three hundred and fifty seven thousand six hundred and twelve dollars.
Thanks. Both the school and a regular budget combined is over four hundred.
Can you just repeat the mill rate? There's some people at the back. Twelve point one five. Twelve dollars and fifteen cents. From thirteen thirty five last year. Public court director in chief, please come up.
I got that one.
Oh, that's funny. I was gonna say.
Uh, road standards. We've done road standard back revise on the second twenty twenty two. Sure that we're good to go. That which wants to. Not that I know of accepted by. Town. By district. I'm reporting. So. What would you tell my team? All of this.
Yes, so. When that was submitted a couple of years ago, there were three. Many things in there that were concerned because they were expensive items. One was granite curves. That was changed at asphalt curve. Another one was pole heads and certain culverts, which that was changed to. Um, to discretion of the. Director of the Department of Public Works, so kind gave some play in there. Uh, and change some things specifically. So those are the two, two big items. Or whatnot. But. Playing board. I made.
Perfect. Yep. It was an attitude. Hey, please. Uh, we do have the quarterly. Year four. Two add patients are received, both are denied. And I have been not submitting prior documents, have been without attempt to apology per call.
Yeah. Well. You know about. Put on a decent one out there. I'm gonna make a long there alone. So. I'm coming down. But there's not enough room out there to grow. I'm full of seed. I mean, penguins. So. Got done with a few other bits we'll be talking with. Grow vegetables, flowers, or whatever. But use it more as a seed bank guard. Stuff go to seed, collect the seed. Maybe put some brochures out there, teach people how to grow, what they're growing. And that way you can feed the people. My passion on seed, teach people. Farm on my. So folks, that's that.
There's not. People drive. Just wanted to mention also that a library is actually designated seed bank. Depository, so there are also seeds available there, a lot of them. And I've used them, even if they're not more for this year, they'll still germinate. So people are free to go in there and get free seeds as well.
I don't know, they have enough seeds.
Add to it.
I'm not. Well, I thought we. Quit it up. Now for the nice one. What do you guys think about? So what do you guys think about? I know. It's probably gonna have to have a path with one out there. That like. Especially being on town. Uh, we. Got to deal with that. So. Okay. Sweet, all folks. Like we would love to create a. Town guidance committee. Got anybody volunteer?
I have a question. Are you gonna invite Nancy Coquelin on it?
I cannot.
Cannot.
I cannot. Mr. Carbone has a criminal trespass order, he's not allowed to name to a dime of Main Street. Therefore, he cannot set foot on this property. So he will not be.
Mind elaborating on that at all?
Let's say we'll elaborate on this criminal trespass order that was placed upon him. And a cease harassment. There is no more elaboration to it. Been served due to his. His behavior. And is not allowed. But little predator of the other.
That's fair enough.
Fair enough.
Edit.
Man, put your hand up.
Yes, I'm. Back there.
Yep.
I'm.
Perfect. Anybody else? Two of late. Anybody else?
Under you are.
This daddy doing things.
Teaches.
So when the personnel manual was last updated.
I believe that was this year, twenty five. That works.
Let's go.
Yeah. Sure was, yeah.
Twenty five.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. So, right.
Uh, weather.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
B J Parker.
Cool. Sure.
So you guys take the old time.
Yep.
I was thinking maybe you guys set that up at the town dump. For your public workers. Because a lot of people have time to sit here and read the sign as the cycle is through. I love the white charm sign. But everybody goes to dump, almost everybody. I know you have dumped. You don't.
I don't.
But it would give a lot of people the opportunity to stop.
Who's gonna, who's gonna help?
Right. Anyone to keep going these.
Have one.
Day, and they.
You're gonna say.
And I'm not, and I'm not, I'm talking about stapling. Uh, just a posting, I'm not talking about going out there and changing. The letters, I'm talking about taking a notice.
No, I haven't said that. Um, but now they're talking multiple postings every week.
That's correct.
Always should. So. Uh, there you go. Think that's funny. Fun now, right? I don't know. Sorry, I thought it was pretty fun. The only, the only problem I see, something doesn't get posted. And I don't say. I mean, honest to God, folks, there was a complaint. That the sign out here wasn't updated at six ten at night when. Something was posted. Oh my God, I didn't even bother to put it on the sign. Really? So my problem, my problem with it would be. One, the updating part of it. And. Keeping it. Updated. With the expectation of seventeen hundred different people and what they judge as company. It's. Sorry.
Where do you post? How many places do you have to post the ready post? So it's now. Website, door.
Yeah, depends on, depends on what the requirement is for posting. Uh, we have, we do advertise the shopper's guide wired. Um, website, social media account. We did. Up here at the sign. Of course, now that's going in, should be done next week. Uh, so that'll be the strongly. Strongly feel. So.
I was just thinking, if you use a post office, how many people go to the post office compared to how many people go to the. Transfer station? And while you're waiting in line at the transfer station, it'd be a great opportunity for people to read the notices so that they will get more help.
Okay, I, I, I want to point out one thing, I, I like the idea. We, people have tried the post office. We, people have tried the post office and there have been taxpayers that have gone in there and torn stuff off the wall because they didn't agree. Regardless of that the postmaster.
It's not.
But it's not the point. The point is, we post things and somebody goes in there, pulls it down, and then everybody's looking at us and saying, what the hell, select board? Why isn't it, why can't we be notified?
You're good.
Yeah, yeah, if it's.
Oh, it's unfair. So, yeah, it works out well. But um putting, you know, I'm not against putting a sign down. Only but it does stand. But you know what? You know what? This is outstanding.
I think so. I think it's a great idea.
I don't care. We have a communications committee.
We sure do.
We need to take that to them and I would be, I would love to hear what they come up with.
Great idea.
That's right. So if you could reach out to the, actually, Ms. Patty, if you could reach out with that. Um and. Again, I don't know. You know. Um. Before you leave, could you give her your contact information?
Yeah.
That's a really possible. Good one.
So I just heard you're waiting in line at the transfer station, getting your place, so you put back in and dump. You're the third car back. Go check the board, so you jump out of your car, run in between the other cars. You stand in your look and the first to move. Now you're holding up the five behind you and everybody's really pissed. I think that's a stupid idea.
You're just going out. Uh I, you're at, you're absolute, that you're absolutely right. But there's always. Wait, the, the sign is available. I can't, the dump, because everybody knows the dump. You could put it at the town beach.
We'll get past.
If you have a dump sticker, you can go to the town.
Well, we're going to the culvert where it's like exactly.
If it's on, if it's on.
Free game.
Well, that's, if it's on town property, it's damage. The town employees can deal with that.
That's it. Can you take it to the communication?
I would love.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I would think if I could see with that, I don't think it's a bad idea, but then you gotta have board if you're posting safer on there. What do you do about it?
There, there's all, it's by the laws. I, I see him in a lot of communities, phrase front of the town hall itself.
Yeah, that's why it's less stable.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's, I'm just saying, so I have to press.
That's a regular. Maybe.
They, they, they work very.
That's why. Yes. Yeah. I'll put your dog to.
What is coming?
I understand that you all like your committees, but it shouldn't take a committee to make a little change in the committee. Because then you're just trying to push a rope. You don't go nowhere. It stinks up on the ground.
How long you live here? Does it matter?
Does not.
Yes.
No, it doesn't.
History.
Yeah, and it will repeat itself.
For example, already. And it's going to. This is exactly why people don't get involved with that. Right here.
What?
Right here. This is why.
What's that? Right.
Right here in this community, and that's wrong. It's happening. Somebody came up with a great idea. We're asking where they're from.
How long?
He shows at it. We're, we're shutting it down. We're telling them, no, you better go to the committee to say it.
No, incorrect. No. Hold it down, folks. Absolutely not. I did not.
Now you get through this now. Now you get.
By any means. I mean, referring to the committee.
I was, I was referring to the woman in the audience who just repeated multiple times that we need to take it to the committee and not discuss it in an open meeting. I do.
As far as.
You can say, I forget.
I take it fast.
Yeah.
I'd bust my ass trying to make sure that anything is brought.
So I think.
Is taken and, and dealt with quickly and doesn't get kicked out of the road.
Uh, and I I sort of, I'm sorry.
I, I, I try to.
I know you do. And you're very passionate, but the way you come across is not okay. So sorry. It's not okay. You stood there and you stood. You stood there and you shamed people for, for paying attention to what they couldn't afford in their wallets. And that needed. That was not acceptable. You were also rude to media by telling not common is not common.
Well, guess what, ma'am? Guess what, ma'am? I have the same rights that you have.
That's right.
I.
You know, you're gonna get fixed with involvement.
Good. I can't wait. As far as uh shaving people, absolutely not.
That's exactly what.
That's.
Oh, no, he didn't.
That's your opinion. I put a lot of, I put a lot of time and effort into this and the committees. Yes, one hundred percent. How can you go wrong with the committee? It is taxpayers. It's taxpayer involvement in coming up with ideas to make something happen for the good of the town.
I think it's a great idea to turn it to the committee. But when it's all like you're shutting it down right here in this room and people are talking about ideas, well, nothing else is going on. I don't think that's wrong. I don't think that's bad.
But my, my question.
And I don't think questioning somebody on this.
I didn't.
No, you didn't. What's other than this? Are you the chair?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I am. I always. So. What's your question?
I uh just to, just for the committee thing. I believe a lot of taxpayers put a lot of bait and threats for his owning a business and being able to make decisions. You, the board of selectmen, separate board, different board, brought to the town by a truck. It didn't get approved at town meeting. And I understand your position of putting it to a committee. But you also, if you did not put it to a committee and you went out and purchased the truck, would immediately be saving the town money. And as our board of selectmen, that is your responsibility.
One of the things, I, I, I appreciate that. Uh one of the things that seems to happen around here. And keep in mind, folks, I'm now starting year ten behind the table. So if we were to just arbitrarily spend X amount of dollars out capital improvement account, you can ask Frank, you can ask Landon, you can ask Ms. Patty. That's what I wanted to do. Because I know, I, we don't, for the capital improvement, we don't need the taxpayers' okay. Frank and Benny were adamant to take it to the taxpayers, let them make the decision, because that is a big purchase. What was my answer? Okay. I, no problem. Let's put it to the taxpayers. And as far as us stepping out and doing it, I think, you know, you, you got the facts right with the, the figures. But we had two articles and they voted both of them down. What's that gonna do to us?
They almost fired all of you. Like seriously, when are you all gonna take responsibility for the town?
Oh, I'm here to do it. I'm here to tell you. One thing I, I, I will address.
I know.
And I have zero, zero qualms about this. This plays it with your compliments as well. Anybody has the, the fortitude, they want to come and take my job, by all means, get your signatures, get the petition turned in. We'll route it to legal as we are required to. And then we will put it to a vote. I have zero qualms whatsoever in answering for any of my decisions, any of my opinion, any of my actions to anybody, to include a judge. I got no problems with that whatsoever. None. So if anybody feels the necessity to get rid of me, then do your due diligence. Get your petition, get it signed, and get it turned in. You are, I am more than happy to step aside and let any of you take this position and the responsibility all the time that it takes. And what we have to do on a daily basis that ninety nine percent of taxpayers don't see. They just don't. They don't see it at all. We are all replaceable, folks. Everybody's replaceable. I'm replaceable. You want the job, come take it. Come take it. I got a lot of time, I got a lot of effort, and I got a lot of sleepless nights dealing with the things that are happening in Brown. One hundred percent. Hold your question.
Yes.
As far as my, my actions, as I was told, that I shamed taxpayer. Okay, take it as, as you see. You really. But I get to see seven days a week all the employees of this town and what they have to do. Because guess what? I'm right in on ninety nine, four, nine percent. So I get to see that. And my statements at the town meeting, one hundred percent, don't take advantage of, you're damn straight. And I stand behind that. One hundred, one hundred. One hundred percent, and I will say it again. Those employees come here, they put up with the bullshit, and they still come back the next day with a smile on their face, regardless of how they're spoken to, what they're doing, doesn't matter. Ninety nine percent of it is criticism. You don't hear it from a lot of taxpayers until they got a prop. Then they go away. I would love to have somebody answer me, answer this question for me. How is it we had over thirty days, if that warrant was out for view and public, we had a hundred and five taxpayers show up to the town meeting? A hundred and five? That's like the second lowest in the past decade. We average a hundred and twenty. But yet we had a hundred and seventy eight show up for one article. What? Where, where, where were they? Where were they? Because it was a hot topic. It, it was reminiscent of water extraction back in the day. Those were the kinds of numbers that we saw for water extraction. But typically, a hundred and twenty people make the decision for one hundred percent of the town finances. And guess what happens, folks? These three gentlemen right here, after the town meeting and the taxpayers make the majority decision. Somebody doesn't like it, we're the assholes. I got zero problems taking that. None. Anybody has a complaint, please bring it. At no time ever do I ever try to belittle, demean anything of that nature when it comes to this job. Other than tonight, purposely, I did wear no briefs, because I haven't been paid, so I can't buy a jersey. But I take this shot seriously. I do.
So. I have to regret.
Please do.
I really agree. Like, I don't want to come across wrong. I'm gonna put it on your table. Uh, why, why any guy's buying stuff? Like, I understand you formed a committee, it's a little vague.
It went on about. No, 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 incorrect, incorrect.
Am I?
You are incorrect. Okay, this is, this is what happened. We had gone out to print, we had already had two informationals.
Right.
On the truck. We'd gone out to print with a warrant, so I couldn't ask the pub, I, I didn't have a warrant to put an article into, because I'd already gone to print and I had to go. Um, so in order, when the truck that was presented, the, the, the freight line, um, it was after, like, five days after we went to print. So the only way that I could get it to the taxpayers in a timely manner was to put it on the vote pack, which is why we had one article, article one, to purchase the truck. It's just due to the timeframe and the constraints that I had, because we had to hold a public hearing. And I've been chastised religiously about the school board budget vote meeting.
Right.
I didn't have a choice, folks.
Right.
Due to the timeframe, I, there are certain dates that I have to meet for public hearing. It happened on the same day. We adjourned that public hearing thirty minutes prior to the meeting starting in Friday. If it takes you thirty minutes to drive to Friday, the gas pedal's on the brake. So that's why we went to, it went to a ballot vote. Now, I do want to point out a, a couple of nuances with that. There was a flyer that went up. There was no backstory. There was, there was nothing, no justifications. And if people were at the, the select board meeting last week, um, I did the math in front of everybody. It's cheaper for us per load to stay with the increased seven hundred dollar trip with power incinerator than it is to go with the CIA portion that we were, the, the person with the flyer was adamant that we sign a contract, a minimum of one year contract. And is that truth? Folks, no, 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 no. No, we're, we're gonna lose money. We're, we're gonna lose more money. So let's stop the bleeding. But the taxpayers, uh, I, I think we had nine and eleven people show up to the information meeting. Oh shit. That flyer was very dependent on it. People, I think, took that flyer for factual, which it was not, and ran it. So now, as taxpayers, I know the answer is cheap. It's gonna, the money's gonna hurt. We don't have a choice, we have to get rid of the trash. So at the town meeting, we, I made a deal with the taxpayers. Hey, you know, we'll revisit it in November, because we have a November referendum. If we hold a special town meeting, it costs anywhere from eighteen to twenty five hundred dollars to do that. Okay? So in order to not expend more money, let's just do the November referendum. And I made a deal with the taxpayers and most agreed. Let's revisit it for the uh November referendum, which I believe is November fourth. And we'll form a committee, which we did, to let some of the taxpayers that were naysayers to begin with, let them get involved and let's, let's get some input from the taxpayers so that it's put out to everybody, all taxpayers, what they, what they find. And I, I know what they got for. We got months of this. So I, I did make a deal with the, the original town meeting, a hundred and five taxpayers. I did make a deal that I would revisit this. So the committee was formed for judge that. Uh, is it short, uh, uh, you know, a short timeframe? Yes, it is. Um, but a lot of times, the three, five people you see sitting right here, we have to make decisions on a fly uh for things that require a meeting. So a month, uh, I'm hoping that we have something that we can take from the taxpayer from every side. Now, one thing I do want to impress, there will be at least two informational meetings and one public hearing, which is statute totally required. Now, the statute requirement is uh seven days prior to vote. Or it's a ballot, we're gonna have to be thirty days out if we have an art. So. Lots of time. We haven't had that since these uh by October. Or it is prior to vote. So.
There's no doubt about it. Love the government, it's very frustrating to deal with. Everybody, there's no one I know is better than I do, that nobody goes online. Like, it's for real, right? So it's not. What you said, it was the way you delivered it and your passionate effort to have the staff be compensated appropriately. And I'm all about that, all about that. If I could, all about. That being said, I think it should be, there should be a platform for making those decisions. And I think that we need to be mindful that everybody is entitled to an opinion. And everybody has a responsibility to themselves to pay attention to their wallets. And not everybody has experience in politics that everybody understands, all the timelines. Like, I get that, the all the timelines and all of that. I know there's something swirling going on and probably it was because you were limited by state statutes that require you to finish up the timeframe. But I think the way you deliver it, Mr. Everie, is too much for people. And I think it's hurting you and I, I just want you to know that. Like, it, it felt like shame and being yelled at for not being involved and not giving raises or having opinions of alternative to what people expected. That's how I wanted to deliver that message tonight. You fired me up a little bit and I apologize for being fired. You fired me up a little bit and I apologize for being fired up. That's really what it's about, your passion. I'm the same way. So I get it all the time. I'm only telling you when I already know about myself. So I'm gonna, you know, thank you for the trouble.
I will, uh, I'll work on my doing.
Yeah, because I will say both.
I guess so. Work on it.
I just wanted to answer his question. You think God flew that? The reason why the select board cannot go back, go buy a truck now because we were defeated. And if they get defeated in a town meeting and then they turn around and go buy a truck, they're gonna be all assholes.
I, you're all assholes. And I don't mean that literally.
Huh?
I'm trying to respect the people.
Right, okay, go ahead, yeah.
I can address that.
Okay.
It's a new fiscal year, yes we can. I can't do it in the second fiscal year.
Oh, you can do it in the new fiscal year?
Sure, good.
Yeah, but you, do you want to?
That, that wasn't the question.
Like, he wants, well, he, he's a man's word, one point word.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't the question.
If he was running a business the way he should be running the business, no offense, and it's not because he's keeping his word, so he is. But if it was his business, he'd go out and buy the truck tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not buying it. I, I was the reason, I answered, yes, yes we can.
It was open to... Open.
Uh, Deb, your hand turns up.
Uh, no.
Okay. ACO.
What are we gonna do with the two complaints for alums?
At, at the distress now, the ACO. Hee-hoo.
I have a complaint at the Whipplewell in my backyard. Now, but seriously, um, how can we best help move things along with the truck decision? Can people come out? The informational meetings, um, the public hearing?
I can address that.
Please, Chair, come here. Right, I'm the chair. The committee meets tomorrow night, the first meeting is five-thirty. Um, we are a committee of nine, as we're captain. So it keeps us ahead. So our first meeting is tomorrow night at five-thirty here. Anybody who's welcome for thirty.
Do you have your meeting scheduled?
Yeah. Uh, the schedule for the rest of them?
Yes.
No, that'll be done tomorrow night.
Okay, did you give that to me? I'll put it in the minutes.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And it's already put the agenda out there.
Okay. That is good, actually. We'll obviously go home here. Definitely.
Well, the Turk Committee, I would gather, would be disfounded, uh, coming to November referendum. Uh, I, I'm not saying it's going to. Uh, I would like to hope that we have a decision made, uh, for a ballot article. Uh, no guarantees. The information that's provided and, and what we have available. But committees, uh, committees can go away.
I just like the idea that to put all the meeting dates, like, if every committee is starting, budget committee, all the committees, that on the web, they, they schedule when their upcoming meetings will be, but not on the website, people can stay at a tour. And I will tell you that Vigna and Social Services, we have found that that things to be higher, I recommend you do that, because people are embarrassed. I just, we're sorry.
Yeah.
All the, all the, pointing, something, the dates come out.
One last thing. Next Monday night, five-thirty is Playground Committee. Playground Committee will be picking, uh, playgrounds to give to the select board to decide on what, what they looking at. So anybody who wants to come out to give their opinion, but next Monday night. Sorry, hold on.
Ready?
Yeah, tomorrow. I'm talking to you. Tomorrow, sorry.
Playground Monday?
Playground is gonna be on sixteenth, it's a Wednesday. Sorry.
Two, five.
I swear to God. Five-thirty.
Like, is that here?
Yes.
It's on Monday, right?
Yeah, Monday, Monday the seventh.
What?
The Playground Committee is Monday the seventh.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was in tune.
Every Monday.
It's every Monday, very.
So I'm not a...
No, I'm sorry, I was in the wrong one. It's every Monday. Every Monday in July, five-thirty.
Monday.
Yes.
Do you have a date for the, the, uh, current Playground?
No, we, uh, voted on the, uh...
You don't know?
Oh, okay.
It's already started.
Yeah. When I left, we made a vote, selected Brown. They had flipped my head.
It's already been started.
We're all begun. Perfect. Yeah. Yes.
Uh, can we can sign the frame of book tomorrow? Uh, so you can see out front, the base, the desk, uh, much better than we anticipated, that's just who, who he is. So, uh, that part looks good. Um, with, as the electrician scheduled for, uh, Monday, seventh, five-seventh. Um, and I'll, I'll be, Lynn and I are gonna call the signed contractor to make sure we're on the same page. Electric, we pretty much know what he wants. Just wanna double check. It's pretty straightforward. Um, so sometime after the eighth, the sign will be up and running. And, um, Lynn needs help with programming, you have that built into the contract. And, uh, there's a lady who reached out to her programmer for the actual, uh, uh, company that makes the sign, so. The program. Um, the other thing is, uh, I gave you the information I have from the door operator. Um, initially, there was a price received for nine thousand dollars and change to put in new door, new, a holding system with the operators. Um, that seemed a little exorbitant, so we went back out and, uh, we got three prices from Door Controls, Asset Avoy, and Door Services, um, for a single door operator. So you guys can take a look at that if you have any questions. Um, you'll see that there's a lot of red question marks. They're mostly for the two bidders. The prices range from three hundred, three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for door services at a limited very venture, to Asset Avoy out of Massachusetts for five thousand and for door services at Horton for five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight or forty-eight dollars. The, uh, the low bidder is planning on using a Horton operator, which is a good operator, it's been out there for a long time. Um, it's not some, somebody who just started making operators themselves. It's well on the, uh, along with PIS, which is now owned by Asset Avoy. Uh, so, uh, there'll be a little bit more digging with that, but the next step is going to be, um, and I don't have, select board wants to handle this, but, uh, getting prices on new doors, um, out front. You're gonna want something decorative. Um, you know, like, something that has weather stripping on it, uh, head reinforcement for the operator. And my only suggestions on the board is that, um, make one door larger than the other. Uh, say forty-two inches, gives a little bit more room for folks in wheelchair or with crutches, um, to get through the door. And then the smaller league will be inactive and help place the flush doors. Um, but that decision has to be made and pricing has to be gotten for that.
Think I should make a committee? Pardon? I think we ought to create a committee.
All favors.
But you didn't want me to help, did you?
I, I think, I think there already is a committee, it's Michelle and myself. So if anybody else wants to join, they can, but, um, you know, I think so.
Quentin.
Thirty-second of every month. Um, but, uh, uh, we got three prices for, you know, I, I, I think what's the most expensive part of it. And, uh, you know, I think getting three prices will take some time. For the other part, if you ask me, I would say, you know, you've had parts, there's some more here, get prices for that. Um, just as long as you've got, well, then pricing it up along the same material. And we can get together, uh, I can get together with the select board, or, you know, like, or somebody from the select board along with Michelle, and we can come up with some, uh, reasonable and long-lasting ideas.
Dude, if you're gonna put the ball, you're gonna run it. Pardon? You're gonna... Ball is my story, stereo push play.
Yeah, that's, um, now, one bidder, minus one, of course, um, had a baller included, so, um...
Well, I know what I can think of putting in, and everybody's gonna be at the high end. How you put it in, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Two guys that don't have it, one guy.
Right. And there was another option that was suggested of putting a, um, granite baller out there, push plate on it. There's options. Uh, if you take a look at those boots that are out there for the sign, get a boot, you know, get a nice post, um, anchor it in there and then run low voltage wiring out. Um, so I don't think that the, well, it, it all depends, it's all relative, it's expensive. But, um, I think it can be done reasonably. And I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't go with the high guy because he has a problem.
Well, I'm not saying it to...
No, no, no.
But, by the time you pay, I mean, a granite post is seven or eight hundred dollars just for the pole. Look at that, get a wire and an adder. It's the same money.
Yeah, and, and, and that guy isn't wiring. You know, the guy's providing the baller. We'd have to get an electrician to bring power, hundred and twenty, fifteen amp out to the header, and then also get low voltage wiring going out. Two push plates, one inside and one outside. We have Enterprise Grant, um, on July fifteenth, whenever this meeting ends, uh, there'll be a public hearing for the Enterprise Grant. Basically, it's just to tell everybody that we've been awarded the grant. However, now we're into some heavy duty paperwork, which you guys have to sign or, or rip, you have to sign or write the sign part of it. And once we get that into them, I'll list it, Turian Holden from the, um, Lockring, uh, Department, Augusta. And once we get these to her, um, we'll be in good shape. We have to pay for our paperwork. Um, and there'll be a couple steps to follow and then we need to go out with it. So what we're gonna have to do is, uh, advertise, try to get three bidders. Uh, she did tell us that you have to make best effort possible to get three bids for the work that needs to be done out there. And while short, it's a mean, can't be before. Um, just as long as we do what she told us to do, advertise, you know, get the word out there and, uh, you know, solicit bids. Uh, but the other part that we need to do is we need to get, uh, need to find out what decisions we're gonna make as far as, uh, siding out there especially, siding and type of movement out there. And, um, we need some people that are getting together to side walk. You know, people who have, you know, some, uh, skills as far as that's concerned. There's been a couple suggestions, vinyl siding, get textured one-eleven, again, replace what's out there, what's, uh, just new, maintain it. The painter told us that put the same thing up, maintain it, it's gonna last. Uh, right, so his, his vote was to go with the same thing that's out there, just replace it. Um, but we should come to a decision on that soon because we do need to go out to bid. And once we get these documents that you sign out to Turian tomorrow, find out what's next. Um, you know, we wanna get advertised in paper, if we want to, for aspects of what we wanna put up out there so we can get, uh, oranges to oranges price out of that whole space.
Probably stick with words there.
And, you know, once again, options are, you know, they vary. You know, if you go with vinyl, if you go with cement board, if you go with wood, uh, you know, the other parts of that, what's gonna be easier.
How much of the wood has to be replaced before you could vinyl?
Before you could vinyl?
Any...
It all, you know, it all depends on how that vinyl, um, ends up, what's out there. You know, like, just ground it, what's out there, all in underneath. You know, like, the roof edge, that sort of thing. Um, and ju- just so everybody knows, um, uh, John Mooch did get back to me and he said that, you know, the sled paint on it, as long as it's just pulled off and brought to the transfer station, it's okay. Um, he said, if anybody has any questions about it, he's with A D E P, they'll be glad to answer them, but that's it in a nutshell. You know, like, just pull it off, don't scrape it, don't cut it.
No nibbling?
Pardon?
No nibbling?
No nibbling, especially. Uh, so, anyway.
Who's scratching?
I, I agree, Frank, if somebody else's problem, then it ain't mine. You know, like, it's easy enough to pull off. Uh, you know, like, and places with time, you know, like, it's gonna fit, like, so. But I, I agree with that, I'm never in favor of covering up something like lip paint or asbestos, it's just passing down to somebody. Let's...
I'm doing a job T-one-eleven and, um, replacing and changing some of the windows and, uh, boarding back the T-one-eleven. So one stretch, so on the recess, it's, so it looks like boarding back. Just a suggestion. You need all committee to do what you gotta do. All, all right, I'm, I'm the chair.
So, I'm just kidding.
Go put your hat over. You got your cap on.
I would recommend that we make respects replaced with income. And then we ask whoever bids on the job, if you have a better idea, give us an all price. By better idea, I don't mean more expensive. I mean something else that we can look at. Probably one of them's gonna be vinyl. Um, you know, cement board, green board, but at least we'll have something compared to, I would try.
It's gonna go for what, two weeks? Bad?
Yes.
A bit?
Uh, yeah, I, I would, you know, like, I'm not sure, whatever, Turian will fill us in. Like, for instance, this, um, uh, this public hearing I have on the fifteenth here, we only need ten days. That was it. And it's right in our information, we only need ten days. So we got it in, well, it'll be in tomorrow, uh, we sent it into them. And, uh, you know, so we'll get to ten days. Uh, one other thing I would suggest, because for the people, for the contractor that's gonna do the work, there's a lot of paperwork. And you look at it and you just say, get it, I want to do it. And I think that's why they realize that try to get three bids, if you only get one, you can stamp off. You're willing to walk through, but I would suggest one more paper, like, paper written or Conley, um, try to reach out, make it a wider, you know, like, try to capture a wider audience.
Can you, if you haven't seen this page, you do?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll take care of it.
We have only week, first thing, Conley, three weeks to talk about.
Yeah. And the other thing, of course, is word of mouth. Know of anybody who's interested, like, you can do that work. For true painting or replacing boiler room door or siding. At the, like, start talking it up. Tell them there's paperwork involved. I think, you know, like, paperwork looks scary, but I think once they really take a look at it and ask a few questions, I'm sure we could probably get Turian down here to meet with members and do it and, uh, fill them in and make them feel better.
After the man or the purple mask get put into town in eight minutes?
Who?
Family purple cats.
No, no. It was in the video, yes, because it was recorded. Yes. You are, you are.
I was just, I was just curious. So I thought it was funny.
Anything else, folks? Hey, I'll make a motion to enter an executive session to one M R S A four oh five from six A. Folks, uh, because the planning board is going to have their meeting at seven, the executive session will happen in Mr. Patty's office as a regular, so what is meeting will be adjourned from that office. Thank you, folks.